The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and respect for oneself and other, to develop a responsible citizen for our diverse community and ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm laughing as my friends are walking in the back. Sorry.
Okay, at this point in the meeting, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items only. Okay, hearing none. Student member report.
For the middle school report. Congratulations to the HAWK Student Spotlight recipients for the month of November. Students are nominated by staff members for modeling great academic performance or high character. They are Harper, Ben Yaman, Lilly, Varsell, Andrew Michaels, William Connor, Anne Marie Martinez, Maddie Boyle, Chris Galinda, and Luca Archvedes. The Riverdale Middle School students and staff have participated in several fundraisers the last month, including the following: A student council tape your principal to the wall fundraiser in collaboration with the family promise of Bergen County, which resulted in over $600 raised to feed those facing food insecurity; a student ambassador toy drive in collaboration with Toys for Tots, which resulted in over 200 toys for those in need for this holiday season; an interact club sneaker drive in collaborations with Souls for Souls with the goal of collecting over 200 pairs of gently-used shoes and sneakers for those in need; and the annual coat drive run by Mr. Mandarino. The winter concert will take place tomorrow evening in the middle school. The seventh and eighth graders' chorus group and bands will perform in front of a packed house of family and friends as they attempt to elevate their holiday spirit with their beautiful sounds of the season.
And in the high school, the month of December has been filled with great activities and amazing holiday spirit as we head towards the holiday break. To start the month off, students that are part of the teen pep program and other volunteers participated in decorating many teachers' doors on Saturday, December 7th. Thank you to all of those who participated, and the doors look absolutely amazing. We want to say a big congratulations to Jeffrey Jung, who won the record athlete of the week on December 13th. Jeffrey is a part of the swim team, and all the students are happy to see a classmate win a great award like this. We also want to give a huge congratulations to the Quiz Bowl team, who qualified for the state championship and got sixth place. As we head into the last week before break, there are many thrilling activities planned for us, for the students and staff. First off, the robotics team competed in a huge tournament this past Sunday at Riverdale. On Thursday, we not only have the winter concert, but the pep rally during the school day. Students cannot wait to get together with the whole school and really show what Riverdale spirit is. And lastly, all the administrators have put together a spirit week for the holidays. Today was pajama day. Tomorrow will be anything but a backpack day. Wednesday will be twin day. Thursday will be class colors, and Friday will be ugly sweater day. We cannot wait to see all the students and staff participating this week.
Thank you. President's report. I really have nothing to report tonight, but I would like to wish everybody a happy and healthy holidays. And let's go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just want to report quickly on the status of our strategic planning process. As many of you know, we have had a number of meetings already. We met on November 19th and December 9th with a group of different parents and stakeholders, and some board members as well. They've been sharing their ideas and their experiences here at Riverdale over the years with students that they currently have and students that they've had previously, and helping to guide us towards the future and come up with some goals and goal plans and strategic planning for our board to consider in the next couple of months. We have another meeting tomorrow night, December 17th. If you were not at the first two meetings, people are welcome to come to that meeting as well. They're certainly welcome to do that, and we invite you to do so. It's been, I think, really engaging and a very thoughtful process thus far, and I've appreciated being part of it. My thanks to Mrs. Armenthal, Mrs. Ferrelli, Mr. Fagenson, of course, and our new-to-be board member in January, Mr. Houseley, for being part of the process as well. Just a reminder to our students and their families that marking period two, mid marking period report cards will be coming out, the interim reports, shortly, sometime this week. We encourage, as always, our students and their parents to reach out to counselors and to teachers as needed. I wanted to just, because we haven't met since that time, just compliment our students and Mr. Wilson and their team of outstanding performers for the performance in Beauty and the Beast last month. I think pretty much everyone here has been to at least one performance, one musical, either presently this last year or in previous years, and just such a high caliber and such a high participation rate from our students just tells me a lot about what that program is about and how much our students are benefiting from it. And certainly, it was a fantastic performance. So congratulations to all of them. They represent themselves very well, and they represent Riverdale very well, as many of you saw when you went. And I also want to just echo my comments that Mr. Fagenson just made as well, to our trustees, to our board, to everyone out in the audience, just happy holidays and peace and joy for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, committee reports. Budget and finance.
We had a meeting right before this, our board meeting here. Trudy reminded us that the new budget year has started through meetings. Hard to believe that the year has gone by so fast, and we're planning already for next year. And we had the opportunity to meet with our auditor, who'll present our report for this year.
Thank you, John. Facilities and security.
We have not met.
Thanks. Community relations and technology.
Nothing to report at this time.
Curriculum.
Nothing to report at this time.
And policy and governance.
Policy and governance, I believe everything is going to be posted for the new year, but the new policy, correct, stress estimate?
First we just.
Will be up. Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to move that all items designated with an asterisk be part of the consent agenda and approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Claudia. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John. Any questions? Okay.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Yes. 9B. This is a tough one. It's recommended by the superintendent to board accept with deep regret the resignation due to retirement of athletic director Dennis Nelson. Do I have a motion?
If you don't make that motion.
If you don't accept the resignation, what happens?
September 1st, he'll just walk out.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'll make that.
Do I have a second? Thanks. Anybody like to say anything?
Would you like me to start?
Yeah.
So I work with, obviously, in the position that I'm in, I work with many great professionals, and it's my pleasure to work with a lot of great ones here, and historically over the years in my career as an administrator and a teacher and a superintendent, certainly. I've had a lot of fantastic, I've never had a bad athletic director that I've worked with, but I can honestly say that Dennis Nelson is the best one that I've worked with. I'm trying not to take it personally that I got here a year ago and he decided he was going to leave as soon as I got in the door, but he just feels that it's his time. But, you know, on behalf of many, I know, I'm speaking for many, Dennis is a consummate professional. He takes very seriously the work that he does in providing the best experience he can for our students, promotes Riverdale wherever he goes. He's quite involved at the state level, as many of you know, with the NJ SIA and with many committees, and is always looking out for the best interests of our students on all of those committees. So he will be sorely missed. I wish him well. We all do. There's one Dennis Nelson, we're lucky we had him.
Thanks. Trudy?
I would truly miss him. I've worked, it's been wonderful working with him.
You take the vote.
Call it, we can make our statements as we vote. He's saying just call it, we can make statements.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. John?
Yes, and also, I wish him the best of luck, and it's incredible, 23 years is really a lifetime, and, you know, we get retirements in front of the board all the time. This one sounded like a rumor or an April Fool's joke, but I guess people sometimes know when they need to retire, and it's their time. But I think the school community, the parents, and everybody, the students probably who've gone through, Dennis and the team that he's put together will probably greatly miss him. He'll leave an incredible legacy here.
Robert?
Yes, and I wish him nothing but the best in retirement for all the student athletes that he's touched over the years.
Alicia?
Yes. Yes, and I wish him health and happiness in his retirement.
Annette?
Yes, and once again, I wish him all the best in his new chapter. He's definitely set the bar and helped develop a legacy of student athletes, of very good sportsmanship, and he's going to, there are big shoes to fill, but I wish him the best and thank him for his years.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes, and again, I wish him nothing but the best in his retirement, and I hope he understands the impact he's had on the student athletes here at Riverdale. He not only shaped the athletes, but also the spectators and created a culture here at Riverdale where we learn as a school to lose graciously, which is really tough for students, but more importantly, to win graciously and respect all the athletes on the field.
Doug?
Yes, and he'll sorely be missed having three students who played multiple sports at Riverdale go through and work with Dennis. He really will leave a mark on the school. In particular, you know, I would say promoting multi-sport athletes, I think, is a real legacy and something that he's always pushed that I'll, you know, actually, you know, look fond of, and it's going to be a hard spot to fill with someone new.
Barbara?
Yes, he will be missed tremendously, and wish him all the best.
Claudia?
Yes, and I wish him well. He's been an amazing asset to our school, to our students, to their families. Like Tracy Ellen said, he truly has set the bar high for our kids, and also just for the school population, the coaches that work for him. He's one of a kind.
Allen?
Yes, and I'm in the shoe business, and this is going to be an impossible feat to fill those shoes, let me tell you.
Aw, that's cute.
Okay. 11A is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the newly revised policy and regulations manual into the Strauss Esme format for the first reading.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Doug. Any questions?
What is that?
Doug? Thank you.
I have just one question here on this one. So the format that got modified, I mean, inevitably kind of changes the document, and I think we talked about this before, there is no material content change in this process?
No. The only changes that we're seeing, and the many that I've reviewed with them, are code changes, language changes. There were areas that were not updated in our old policies that are now updated to be compliant with code and with law. Where you see some other changes are, some of our policies were freestanding policies and now they're already incorporated in other policies that exist in Strauss Esme, so we've had to track that. That's why it's been such a long process, six months at this point. I think we've been going through it, so, yeah.
So we're talking about a substantial number of changes that the board is going to approve. It's really impossible, I think, for a board member to read it. We will approve it, but is there a way to apprise the board of any of those somewhat material changes?
I can ask them for a summary.
So we know what we're approving? Because it's not practical to read them. The entire bulk of the policies is getting modified, right? So short of putting them side by side and reading them, I don't think it's practical. So if they have some sort of a summary of where the material changes are, I think that will allow us to go by the second reading and actually look at those sections.
Okay. I can ask them to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I started flipping through it. I mean, it's 792 pages on one, I believe, and 780 on the other. I downloaded everything, and I'm keeping it in a file. So if I have any questions as things come up, you know, you have it on hand. You might want to do the same thing.
It is. I mean, we could download it. The problem, to your point, I didn't pay attention to the exact number, but 1,600 pages worth of policies in its best day, you know, when we had a few policies, it's challenging. But I think if there is a way to get what Dr. Albro is talking about, it could be helpful for us to kind of focus right on those. I'm sure the changes are great, phenomenal, and badly needed, but it's not like our normal process where we update, you know, and approve specific ones where you have a chance of reading.
And it's a common question. I've done this once before in my previous district, and it was the same question there. So I'll ask them what they can provide for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes. Okay. 12H. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending November 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Any questions?
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes. Okay. 12Q. Whereas the Riverdale Regional School District Board of Education advertised for bids for the district-wide generator upgrades at Riverdale High School and Riverdale Middle School Project, bids came in for the upgrades of $512,800. For both. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Claudia. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Doug. And for those of you, this is part of the referendum that was passed last year.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes, but can I ask one question? Is that the number we were thinking, or is that lower? Like, that bid, is that where we were?
That bid came in a little lower than.
It came in lower than I thought.
Came in lower than what we budgeted.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Allen?
Yes.
And just, I mean, I think just to, maybe Trudy, if you don't mind, can you just give a little bit more insight? Because I think we're spending, this is all part of the referendum money, and it's really big upgrades to the school. So if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the school now have the capacity, when there's power outages, to basically fully function, and also at both locations, which we don't have currently, and also be a place of refuge for the community in case there's really a larger storm, if I missed anything.
So it would be for, not everything in the building will be completely plugged into that?
No.
But it'll be a good function, and yes, it would be a place for the community to come.
Okay. 12R. Whereas the Riverdale Regional School District Board of Education advertised for bids for the mechanical upgrades at Riverdale High School Project. Platinum Plumbing Heating and AC got the bid, and it's for $1,396,000. And the total contract bid is $1,479,250. This also is part of the referendum, and you want to break it down on what this covers?
So this is for HVAC, like air conditioning, heating at the high school, upgrading some things, so it was a lot of, it's a lot of work. And this came in right at budget, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Do they have to vote separately or vote together?
I need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion for both of them.
Do I have a second?
This is the second one.
Second.
Robert's second, okay. John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes. Okay. At this time, our auditor is here to make a presentation on the audit for 2023-2024.
Good evening. Tonight, you have two reports in front of you for consideration. The first report I like to talk about is your auditor's management report. That's a small of the two reports. This is a report required by the Department of Education. They ask us to look through certain things like your payroll, your purchasing, your ASSA, and if during our audit procedures we find anything of note that we feel needs to be brought to your attention, we would have a finding and recommendation. This past year, we had no findings and recommendations, so you have a clean auditor's management report. Your second report you have tonight for consideration is your annual comprehensive financial report. And here are your financial statements, your notes to your financial statements, and then a lot of other subsidiary schedules that are required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board or the state or New Jersey Department of Education. We prepare these financial statements from Trudy's records, and we apply our audit procedures. As we apply our procedures, we have to render an opinion on those financial statements. You have a modified opinion or an unmodified, a modified opinion or an unmodified opinion. The district receives an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. We feel the financial statements are fairly stated. You have two other reports in the ACFOR. It's a single audit report. That's where we look at your federal-state grants. We know any issues during that audit. We also have comments. That was, once again, is clean. And then there's a Governmental Accounting Standards Report in here also. Once again, clean report. So overall, both reports are clean, unmodified, no comments or recommendations, and overall, the district is fiscally sound and has been able to maintain their reserves. Are there any specific questions anybody has?
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for your.
Yes, well done.
Here.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, and Trudy, I would like to commend you again for this, like, it's a complete 100% clean report with no questions. That's really a great feat, and congratulations to you, and pass along our, thanks to your staff as well, which I'm sure do a great job throughout here to make sure everything's nice and smooth.
Robert?
Yes, and I echo Mr. Samuel's comments as well.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes, congratulations.
And Allen?
Yes, and again, thank you.
Trudy, the side of the table, though, wants to make sure we're not past Eck Valley Green next year.
Yeah, we want to.
Make notes.
Didn't want to. Can't you just be talking back?
Okay, at this point, I'd like to move forward. Three things from the executive session, that being the board's approving a pay rate increase from $150 to $225 per day for substitute nurses. There's a couple of coach replacements and honors, and that's it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes. Okay. Old business. New business.
Well, wait, I'm old, so I'm going to say old business.
Because I've been here a really long time.
So I actually came home and told my husband I was sad that I was leaving. I can't believe it came out of my mouth, because I've been never but giddy for the longest time. But it has been a pleasure working with all of you. You guys keep doing what you're doing, plug away, move this district forward. Jim, you're steering the boat. Keep going. You're doing an amazing job. Trudy, so happy you are in the position you are in, and you are our money person, because we need a woman in charge of that. Just saying. I will say, oh my God, I can't believe now we're getting to a duck.
I hope you're getting all baby.
Holy crap! I didn't think this was going to happen.
You should, you should. We need tears.
I know, I know. God stop that. Okay. So I've had the privilege of a very long tenure. I also have had the privilege of being on every committee. Committee structure is so important, continue to do it. Somebody's got to step up and start, like, you know, when they say make a motion, just go ahead, just make the motion. You're going to sit here longer, and the meeting's going to take longer. Just go ahead and do it. One of you guys make that choice. Let's see, what else? Super proud of the work we've done for the referendum and amazing job moving forward. You guys have a great administration. Push them. Everybody wants, nobody goes to their job just to do status quo. If they're going to their job to do status quo, they shouldn't be in their job. I say this all the time. You have people here that want to be here, push them. Push Jim, push Trudy. That's your job. That's why you sit here as board members. You don't sit here just to, like, approve everything they say. 90% of what we do, we have to before it comes to federal law, but push them. They want to be challenged. This is the job of a board, is to challenge them. What else? I will come back, I will bake anytime you need me to. I will come back, I will bake anytime you need me to, you know that. Especially for like, you know, negotiations.
You'll be our caterer.
I will, I'll be the caterer. I am annoyed about a few things though. So I never got my B's on the roof. I never got winter combines, I don't even think Jim knows about those.
I don't know.
I didn't get humanities and I didn't get Latin. So I'm walking away a little defeated, but it's okay, I'm a big girl, I can take it. But if any of you guys want any of those things, I can give you lots of background information on it, don't worry about it.
I know where to go.
He's on the roof, are you writing it down? You better write it down, John. Good man, good man. And then what else? I'm old, so it takes me a while. I guess that's really it, I have to thank my family, I cannot have done this.
Can you, are they here, can you recognize them?
Oh yeah, that's my husband.
I knew that.
That's my husband, my boy, one is working and one is hopefully on his way home from college. But I'm home, I'm yours. So, but thank you.
He doesn't look too bad. He's not smiling.
That's it, that's all I have.
Can I say something? Before you do that, yes. So I've been on the board six years at the end of this year. It doesn't feel like it, but it's been a long time. And during that six year, we've basically, three veteran board members have transitioned out. And these are board members that were on the board for 10-plus years, if I remember correctly. And it's a lot of experience that's leaving the board, but I thank those board members because without people leaving the board, it doesn't open seats for new board members because some board members are very popular, easy to get elected. They probably could run for another 10 years and residents would probably elect them. It is bittersweet for you probably, looking at what you all accomplished over these years and I think you should be very proud of what you did. I know I'm appreciative because we learned a lot from those board members that transitioned out. And it can't be easy because it's like labor of love. I think when we come here, sometimes it feels like nothing but criticism for what the board does. But I think you have a legacy as well on the board that you're going to leave. Some board members will miss you guys. And I think, I hope the new board members that have joined us will learn and also leave their marks on the board. So thank you very much for your service, it was a very, very long time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. I will say, sorry, I'm on the board because of Claudia or her and her and her sidekick, I should say, who recently left. I remember them recruiting me distinctly. Which is the sidekick?
Stephanie.
Stephanie. But obviously, you know, I will miss you being on the board. Everything, even though I'm slightly mad at you tonight.
I know.
But, but you know, your legacy on curriculum and just in general on the board and as you said, you know, pushing past and current administration and so forth for change, which we have, I think, achieved over the years is very significant. And I will tell you, I'm always amazed by how you actually remember every single teacher, every single student, every single person that has ever come through the room always amazes me. Because I walk past people and I couldn't tell you who they, half the time who they are. So it is a true talent, so you will be missed.
Who's going to pick up on all the details that we've lost now for the last two? But yeah, you've been a wealth of knowledge, you always have everything at your fingertips and you've put in a long and hard, you know, you've worked very hard and you've had a tremendous impact.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looking at, you know, speaking from an employee's perspective, not a member of the board, but an ex officio member of the board, non-voting member of the board. When you lose board members of such tenure, you lose a lot of history, a lot of experience that informs me and helps me to do my job better. So I have your cell phone number.
Absolutely.
When I need to know, when I need to know the why, and this is important, when I need to know the why of something, I know that I can call you and others too, but I know that I can pick up on and I can call you and say, okay, well, why was it this way? Because there's usually an important reason why something was that way. And, you know, I don't like to step on a landmine, and thankfully I have not yet. But I need that touchstone to find, you know, why, the history of something. And you're very good at sharing that, you're very generous at sharing that and have been for the time that I've worked with you. You ask great questions. And one thing that I don't think you take credit for is you're a big cheerleader for the things that are good at Riverdale. You're not afraid to go out and say this is something good and tell anybody who will listen, even if they won't listen, that this is something that's good for Riverdale and that's something that I appreciated in the time that I've worked with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank you for your service and also for bringing me to this lovely place. I hope that
It's a theme.
It is a theme.
It's a theme for me.
I hope when you leave, you find other ways to spend your Monday nights. But we will definitely, I will definitely miss your wealth of knowledge because when you come on the board, you kind of come in blind because you're so used to looking at the school district from the outside and when you begin to see the inner workings and the mechanics, you realize so many decisions are made on history, so many decisions are made based on the relationships people have within the district. And having someone who's so knowledgeable will sorely be missed.
I wish you well in your free time. I'm sure I have a feeling you're going to fill it with other wonderful selfless things and other passions that you have. Don't give up on the bees, I think they're great.
I will not give up on those bees. You're going to come here one day and it'll be on the roof. Mike and I are going to scaffold the building.
But I do think in the short amount of time I have been on the board and our paths crossed, you've left a legacy, these last three years have been a lot of change in the district as far as administrative, as far as referendums, as far as, you know, the new superintendent, and that all has your lasting fingerprint on it and all those journeys. So I'm grateful that we were able to share that together, but I'm excited for your new passion.
Thank you. Thank you.
As we're on the new board members, I want to thank you for instilling your knowledge and love of Riverdale and all the good stuff. But I don't think I ever had a baked good in nine months, so.
I haven't had one either, I'm just saying, yeah.
You might have to come back?
Yeah. It's been two meetings and I haven't had one either, I'm just saying.
Just throwing it out there, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm a little hurt, but.
We know what you're doing the next Monday. Ask for soda bread.
Oh yeah, I'll bring soda bread for you girls and boys, don't worry. I will make sure I get something delivered over to you guys after the new year.
Want to step up to the mic?
Oh God, okay.
We have the option, we can do it here.
No, we'll go to the mic.
First, I'd like to say, I think we've been together 12 or 13 years on the board. And we haven't always agreed.
Nope.
But in the end
I don't agree with a lot of people, everybody knows that about me.
But in the end, you're the true definition of a board member.
Thank you.
There's one word to describe you, you care.
Oh, you stole my line.
You care.
Thank you.
And you have not only a love for the school, but a love for all the kids, not just your own. And you always wanted the best for everybody here. And that is truly what a board member is here to do.
Thank you.
And it's been a great 12, 13 years. You know, we had fights and all, but in the end, I respected you, you respected me. And look where we are today, we're one of the
I know.
10 top schools in Burton County. And it's because of people like you
Thank you.
that we got here.
Thank you.
So in appreciation, I'd like to present you with this plaque. Claudia O'Neill, Were Trustee 2009 to 2024.
Oh my God, that's too long.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, new business.
I think that was it, that was new business.
Okay. Anything for board discussion that we left out tonight? All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments. Please step up to the mic.
Hello, Dr. Albro and all the board members. I represent myself as a River Edge resident, Pradeep Dhariwal, and not in the capacity of Councilwoman-elect Borough of River Edge. With my friend here, Akhil Chavla, I'm also representing the Indian American community in River Edge and Oradell towns. We would again like to request Diwali, the festival of lights, the major holiday celebrated across the South Asian community, to be given as a holiday in the Riverdale School District calendar and no homework weekend in the year 2025-26. Coming year, Diwali will fall on Monday, October 20, 2025. Diwali has been announced as a holiday in a lot of towns across Bergen County. So the system is there past few years. We are waiting when Riverdale School District will gracefully recognize this as a holiday. Despite being knowing for embracing diversity, we are still waiting for our own school district to recognize this. We would really appreciate if this is in place for the year 2025-26. Thank you so much and we really hope we shall be heard. And congratulations to you for your lovely service to Riverdale. My child was actually born when you started here.
In case you didn't feel old enough.
Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion, one last time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Have a great holiday, everybody.